I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Brill-Mittler?
Here.
Councilman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Hale?
Here.
Councilwoman Chohan?
Here.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Okay, we're going to start with council reports, and I'm going to start on my left today with Councilwoman Foster-Dublin.
Thank you, Mayor. This coming Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., the firehouse will have their open house, and we're encouraging everyone to come out, attend, and see the fire apparatus and the demonstrations, and get some tips on how to keep us all safe and prevent fires in your home, and they'll be giving out fire safety tips for all. It's really important that we try to get a large crowd as possible to go out and just to learn as much as we can, because we have seen this past year a lot of fires in town, and we're trying to avoid those. On a note, something that people in town have always asked for is that the police department have one new recruit that will be going to alternate route this coming January, and it's a Highland Park owner. So we have one of our young men from town that will be going to the police academy, and someone that knows our town, lived here all his life, he will be going in, and we're hoping for great things from him. The teen center, the teen center has been very, very busy this year, again, as they've always done a great job in the past, and they have implemented a girls' program, and the girls' program has started this week, and they'll be continuing on, and they have special speakers coming in with activities and events, and the crowd over there has really grown, which is awesome. They also have a financial literacy program that is going to be for four weeks, starting this Thursday, and it's from nine, it's from grade nine to grade 12. And as people, as parents who have kids that have gone to college, we know when our children go off to college, they have all kind of pressures on them from credit card companies and everything else, and if they don't have a strong budget, understand how they have to spend the limited amounts of funds that they have, they can go awry. So this class is really important for the nine to 12-year-old kids that we have, and so the literacy program will be a four-week program, so please, if you have young people, tell them to come out and participate in the Zone 16 literacy program. Another one is, on October 22nd, they'll be having a Friendsgiving afternoon, and it's an opportunity for them to come out and have their pre-Thanksgiving event at the Zone 16 Center. It's called Friendsgiving, because they're going to come together, they're going to have food, and they're going to prepare for those who are less fortunate amongst us, and provide all kind of food and recreational activities for those kids.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin, that was on November 22nd?
November 22nd.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, Friendsgiving, the Zone 6 kids are going to be doing this. Should have said this one first. November 15th, they're going to have movie night at 6:00 p.m., so they're looking forward to their movie night. They'll have their popcorns, because they get a lot of donation, food donation, and one of the things I'm really happy with, I was at the teen center today, and there is a lot of refreshments for the kids when they come in the afternoon, and they greatly appreciate it. They have some really cool food over there from Whole Foods and everywhere else, and they got a lot of good snacks that they partake in. And I said to Ashton, I said, "How quickly does this stuff go?" He said, "If you come back tonight, there'll be nothing left," because there's a place where they just come and hang out, and they're all are enjoying it. So the teen center has been, I believe, a great success, and continues to provide much resources for our young people here in town, and kudos to Ashton and everyone else who participate and run the program. And as we're talking about the teen center, the retaining wall is going up, so for the longest time, we were talking about getting the retaining wall going, so they're construction and going around on the teen center, so we're putting up a retaining wall, so in case we have bad weather, nothing rushes into our center and ruin all that good work that they're doing there. And last but not least, I'm encouraging everyone, as you cross the street, please look up from your cellphones. Please be mindful that you're crossing the street, and that you have to take care of your own personal space and your own personal safety. Oftentimes, you see people crossing the street, and they're looking down on their cellphones, and they have not realized the light has changed, or the light is still red, so please, just be cautious when you're walking on the street to take a minute and look up and to see where you're going. And as where you can, as much as possible, please use the sidewalk for everyone's safety. Thank you. And I'm not going to be at this mic again, so everyone have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilman Fine?
I do not have a report tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Kim Chohan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a few announcements. Over in REC, again, you can now register online at HighlandParkREC.com. And also, our fee assistance for all of our youth programs, for households that qualify for free or reduced lunch. And REC is also looking into adding a new free program for Highland Park children ages zero through five, and with their parents or caregivers. Stay tuned for more details. Over in senior services, Council on Aging Committee will be meeting Tuesday, November 19th, 2:30 p.m. at the community center. And last week, the Arts Commission held their access-granted opening reception and art exhibitions centering the lives and stories of people with disabilities living in our community, and it was standing room only over at Penn Stock. And I'd like to thank, again, Allison Baldwin and the Arts Commission for, you know, everything that they do. This was a really good event, centering around our residents that oftentimes cannot participate in our committees or commissions and different events that we have going on. So thank you again. November is National Diabetes Month. Almost 30 million people in the U.S. have some form of diabetes. One in four don't even realize that they're walking around with the disease, so it's never too late to commit to a healthier lifestyle. And right here in Highland Park, I know the mayor loves her walks with the mayor, so that's a great way to start for free and also catch up with the mayor. And I also, today, like to wish our residents that celebrating a very happy Guru Purp on the 550th anniversary of the birth, on the birth of Gruenonics, sorry. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hale, do you have a report?
I do, thank you. I wanted everybody to know that we have a number of Radon testing kits that are available for free in the Code Enforcement Office, so if you want to test your house for Radon, come on in, and you can get a free testing kit. I also wanted to recognize that Stop &amp; Shop recently gave a very large donation to the food pantry of about $2,800. It was a very big donation. They give a big donation to the food pantry every year. Normally, there's a ceremony. This year, they were unable to sort of coordinate that, but I just did want to recognize that Stop &amp; Shop is a great member of our community and has contributed to the food pantry quite significantly this year and years before. In addition, you may have also noticed at Stop &amp; Shop that there is a box that they're selling for $10, which provides all the fixings for a holiday meal, which, if you buy it, it'll be donated to the food pantry. So far, 146 of those have been bought and donated, so it's been, and it's just been up just for a little bit. So thank you to all the residents and all the people who've shopped there, who have contributed to that. And I also wanted to let everybody know that if you're on a committee or a commission, you should have received a survey, which we sent out. This is part of the Human Resources Committee, and also, it's part of our application for Sustainable Jersey, which is an attempt to try and understand the demographics of all of our committee and council members. And so if you are on a committee or a commission, and you do see that survey, please make sure that you fill it out. And then I'll just end that I had the privilege and the honor of marching in the Veterans' Day Parade this year, along with the mayor and Councilwoman Foster-Dublin, Frank Pallone, Congressman, and Assemblywoman Nancy Pink, and a nice turnout of high school students and middle school students and people from Highland Park, and it's, I think it's just an important tradition that we've had in Highland Park, and I hope the parade goes from Highland Park to New Brunswick, and I think it's a great tradition, and it was very humbling to be a part of it, so I hope we can continue that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to congratulate my fellow members of the governing body for their success last week in our election. Mayor Gail Brill-Mittler, Council President Phil George, and Councilwoman Matt Hale have all been re-elected, so congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of things. We are required this year to review our master plan, and we've spent the better part of the past year in our reexamination report, which looks like this, and it can be viewed on our website. It's the very first link on the top. On this Thursday, November 14th, in this room at 7:30, our planning board will be meeting, and in addition to this, we will be receiving a presentation on the land use element as well. Both of these documents are available on the website now. Please take a few moments to review them, and if you're interested, please come to the planning board meeting this Thursday. And just as a reminder, the master plan is a guide to establish specific goals and provide a framework to work towards by the council, our staff, our planning board, and our zoning board. It's very important. Also, just a reminder that, again, Fridays is our well-known farmer's market, and that runs through December, and Small Business Weekend is November 30th and December 1st, and that's where we'll be celebrating all our small shops with lots of deals and discounts and events, so please come out and walk around the avenue, and we hope to see you there. And also, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council President George?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to extend my congratulations to my fellow council members and the mayor in the election. Lots of projects and initiatives of the last year really came to fruition in the last month or so. The PSENG Solar Farm, if you've been down that way, you can see that the installation looks like it's very well done. The site work is being worked on now, and PSENG, according to the latest estimates, that will have it up and running in January as opposed to the spring. I'm very excited about that, because it also lets us move forward with Phase 2, which is the microgrid, which is in planning as well. And as of November 1st, the final phase of the plastic bag ban went into effect. Spent a little time hanging around Stop &amp; Shop and Rite Aid to see how it was going over, and basically, no one even mentioned that Stop &amp; Shop even had a big sign, and it just moved right along Highland Park, joining, at least in the first phase of banning plastic in our stream. So those two initiatives from the year, we talked about them virtually every meeting, but I'm excited to say that we actually got those done, and electric vehicles, which I'm always excited about. My congratulations go out, we can announce in my discussion with the Administrator, and I'm sure that both of us would get the name wrong, but Mike Wiskorwitz has been provisionally selected as the new superintendent of DPW to succeed Don Risch. There were interviews conducted of a number of candidates, and it was very difficult to make that selection, but just as our other departments have been moved forward and are being examined and moved forward by their leaders, I expect that to happen at PSENG. They asked me to remind you that it is leaf season, which puts an extraordinary burden on DPW to collect leaves, as well as those of us who have to rake or scoop them up. So there will be some, the extra crews doing leaf pickup, both on Wednesdays and after trash and recycling, but please bear with us if they don't get to them right away, because they're expecting a lot of leaf pickup. They also asked me to remind everyone, the weather reports had snow in the forecast for tonight, which missed us. However, the rain and deep cold forecasts that we're going to have for the next couple of weeks bring up the issue of black ice. Our trucks are ready to deal with that, but just be careful, if you will, while you're driving. The upcoming meetings, that STACK meets tomorrow at 8:00. Public Works Regular Committee will meet on Thursday morning at 8:30. Sustainable Highland Park is next Wednesday at 8:00 p.m. downstairs, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Not this evening, but I did want to mention one thing to build off Councilwoman Foster-Dublin's note about the teen center, the work that's underway on the grounds there, because I'm very excited about it. In addition, it's not just a retaining wall. It's a green, it's green infrastructure. We're putting in paving, which has a significant bed to hold water and distribute it, and we're also, through a partnership with Rutgers, they're bringing in money to do a rain garden to go along the side of the building, so that's all kind of part of what's going on right now. The wall is the most prominent component, but it's really exciting, because this is something that we've been talking about, and we're very committed to implementing green infrastructure throughout the town, and so this is a chance in a new building to kind of keep current with things. So it's not just pavers, when you're looking at it, when it's all beautiful and done, it's also a way to store and distribute rainwater as opposed to sending it right into our storms. So keep an eye out for it, and we'll certainly do some kind of fun event in the spring when everything's looking nice and perky.
Thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
Madam Mayor, I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have a couple of things. First of all, I was delighted to join Councilman Hale and Councilwoman Foster-Dublin and all of the veterans from Highland Park and New Brunswick in yesterday's Veterans' Day Parade. It was wonderful to see so many schoolchildren out on the streets, and in fact, I've had a conversation with the principal of the high school, Principal Lassiter, who also was so happy to bring the students out onto the streets that for next year, he wants to start planning much more of a participatory and explanatory program, so that the high schoolers will start to learn more about the veterans, and I'm very excited about that. I'm hoping to be able to have him get together with the folks who organized the march, so that our high school students can be a bigger part of it. So it was wonderful. Thank you, everyone who showed up. I remember, too, when I first moved to Highland Park, it, people would bring their lawn chairs out, and they'd line the streets to wait for the parades. I'm hoping that we can get to that kind of remembrance and celebration of all of our veterans. I want to let you know that next week, we, some of us will be going down to the League of Municipalities event, where we have a chance to meet with other elected officials from throughout the state, to lobby our legislators. I'm on the Resolutions Committee of the League of Municipalities, and I'm co-sponsoring one of the resolutions we're putting forth that has a lot of meaning to us in Highland Park. Those of you who've been writing and calling about all the street lamps that are out throughout town, I want you to know that I spoke with Captain Curbelo the other day, and our police officers, when they're out in the evenings, are going to be able to help us identify the lamps that are out. And the resolution that I'm co-sponsoring is one that we're hoping that the BPU will support, and that is for the electric utilities to go all LED lights, which would save the municipalities money, but not to charge us for the changeover. Additionally, what we're adding into that resolution, hopefully, is going to be, well, right now, just so you know, when the streetlights are out, we are still paying for it, which means you're still paying for it, and we want that to change as well. So there's a big push that I'm helping to sponsor down in Atlantic City, where we will be meeting with the legislators to get some legislation going, hopefully, that would force the utilities to stop making so much money off of us, sorry, PSENG. Finally, I too want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, not only a happy Thanksgiving, but a meaningful one this year. Thanks. Okay, we're about to go into our first public discussion. It's 15 minutes. Each speaker is given three minutes, and this is the portion that we limit to things that are on the agenda. So if you have any comments you want to make about any of the items, or questions about any of the items on the agenda, please come forward.
You can go to the microphone over there, I think, right? Is that there?
Yeah, right there. Right by the door.
Well, this is confusing.
It's in a different place, that's why.
Thank you. My name is Leslie Moran. I'm a resident of Randolph, New Jersey.
Can you speak closer into the mic, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
There we go, much better. Leslie Moran, I'm from Randolph, New Jersey, and I'm a volunteer with the local regional shelter, and also with Humane Society. I want to, and actually, before I say another thing, thank you for being a plastic-free town, because we could learn a bit from you in Randolph. I've already shared email with council and mayor about my experience, our town's experience with a puppy store just five years ago, and because business is legal, does not mean that it is humane or desirable. There are compelling reasons for the ordinance, which is, has been under consideration here, including avoiding expenditure of resources, time, and closing, to close a bad business, because this is exactly what happened in East Hanover, and it happened in East Brunswick as well. Dogs in commercial breeding facilities live in inhumane conditions that nonetheless allegedly comply with the Animal Welfare Act. The public is routinely deceived, we found this in our town, by sales pitches indicating that the USDA designation means something and represents high standards of care. And just to give you one simple example, a female dog can, there is no restriction on how often or for how long a female dog can be bred, and that does not strike me as a high standard. Pet shop owners will try to have you believe that there are few bad actors out there, and that they are the exception, but there is ample evidence, we've shared some of that with you, of serious systemic problems, and plentiful examples of their involvement with known large-scale breeders who have violations of the Animal Welfare Act. So let's look briefly at New Jersey. Every year, the Humane Society publishes a list of breeding operations that have the worst violations. They call it the horrible hundred, and this list is compiled from research that is publicly available, violations, fines, records that, you know, are, well, they're not easily accessed, but they can be accessed. Well, at least 53 of the horrible hundred were shipping puppies to New Jersey in the timeframe 2015 and '16, when the Pet Purchase Protection Act went into effect. And I actually have here, I mean, we have many inspection reports in our files, I'm sure my colleague Jean here does as well, and I, some of this is so disturbing, I'd rather not share it here, I'm going to leave this, but to just read you an example.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but it's already three minutes.
Okay.
So you can come back up if there's still time during this portion, or later on?
Yes, I don't think I need to. I'm sorry. I think I got the gist of it.
Oh, yes.
I will leave this with you, this inspection report.
Okay. And also, with the ordinance, because it's on second reading, I believe, there's a public discussion portion then as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Ellen Rosner, Croneman Building. Can you hear me? I can't tell if this is, if I'm a little bit high for me.
Maybe someone can.
Thank you. I always hope somebody will stand up and do that. That's good, thank you. Thank you. So first, I want to congratulate the mayor, because you won some award regarding affordable housing efforts.
Highland Park did.
Highland Park did. Good. So four weeks ago, October 15th, I emailed the mayor about an issue in Croneman Building. People in the building said, "Don't waste your time, she won't do anything." But I said, "I would like to make my own conclusion. I would go on my own experience." I emailed her 6:00 a.m. on Tuesday, October 15th. She replied, one hour later, 7:00 a.m., she said she'll check into it. I went back to the naysayers. I said, "See? She's right on it. I mean, 7:00 a.m., she's getting back to me." Alas, no response. Two more emails from me, no response. On the fourth Thursday, October 24th, the mayor has a regular, every fourth Thursday, sit down and talk, anybody go up with your issue. So very good, transparency, accountability, that's good. Campaign slogans, if I recall correctly. So we discussed the issue, which will become clear in a minute, and at that meeting, she said to her sidekick, Harry.
My aide.
Aide, her aide, sorry, Harry. She gave him the names of two people in two different agencies to call regarding this issue, which I don't remember who it was, because it wasn't said to me, so no need for me to remember. He was going to remember, and called them, and then myself and one other person gave him our contact information so that he could get back to us. We gave him our email and our phone number, but giving him the phone number was not much help, because we don't have cellphone service in Croneman Building. Some of us do not have cellphone service, but we gave him the email. So that was October 24th, three and a half weeks ago. So to date, we have, neither one of us have heard anything from anybody, and I was going to close with the question of, does the mayor ignore everybody in Highland Park, or just the people in Croneman Building? But listening to the meeting, I can see that this is a responsive mayor, so I'm wondering why you ignore the elderly, low-income, disabled people in Croneman Building. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to ask that you, that's not one of the agenda topics, so, and this portion is for agenda. I'm happy to answer all of your questions, and we'll get back to you on that when we get to the regular portion. Okay, now, these are for agenda items.
All right, so my name is Abby Stern Cardinal. I live on Harper Street. All right, so a couple of questions and comments. One is about, I don't know if this counts, it was mentioned already by someone in one of your comments, so I don't know if this wasn't technically on the agenda, but it's about the survey about... But it's about the survey about the committees and commissions. Am I allowed to ask about that? It was already discussed in the meeting.
That's just that...
Borough attorney, is that... Since he mentioned it on the, in his report, is that something we can talk about in the agenda portion?
I think it needs to go to the new items.
Okay.
All right, so I'll come back about that. Another thing I wanted to mention, so something that is on the agenda, is the opportunity to talk in public comments. This has been something that I have brought up several times. You guys used to have a separate conference meeting. It has now been joined, and I understand that. I feel that that was done in a very pointed way, without much explanation. And especially, I was even told that that would be discussed with me. It was very frustrating, because that was another opportunity for public comment. I think you guys should be very cognizant of adding opportunities for public comment, not taking them away. I think that that is a problem if you're looking for ways. I know you're looking on ways to save time. I know it's been some very long meetings. But I think it's a big problem when you're taking away public comment versus adding it. That is a separate meeting. I know it has now been added, but you really do separate, talk about separate items there. And those are different topics. It's something that, you know, if I see something on that that I want to discuss, I will now come up during this session. But I think it was a little bit of a, to be honest, strange and kind of convoluted way to reduce opportunity for more comment. And I'm concerned about that.
So what we're trying to do, Abby, is this... Everything that we're doing in the, you know, since we made those changes till the end of the year, we're trying to experiment with different things that would work for everybody and help with the transparency issue. Come, you know, I hear your comments about the public discussion. And when we start working towards finalizing how we're going to handle meetings in 2020, we will certainly take that into consideration. This is sort of a work in progress for us. As you know, you know, for the last many decades, it was very different. And we're trying to sort of change to meet today's needs. And so I appreciate your comment on the...
I understand that.
And so, you know, as we move forward, you know, we'll certainly... The admin committee that works with me and the borough administrator will certainly take that into account before we finalize what we, how we want to handle these meetings in 2020.
I would just encourage you to not look for ways to reduce public comment. And I know you're trying to save time, I understand that. But I think that that's a slippery slope that you could go down. And it did feel, to be very honest, and I'm sure you guys all know this, it felt very pointed toward me. I was denied the opportunity for a public comment during one of those separate meetings. And then I show up the next meeting, and it's gone. So I think that you want to avoid having that kind of a situation go forward.
Yeah, please know it was not intended for any one person.
Mayor, can they comment? Because it says...
Excuse me, say again?
On the 15, "Public Comment," it says, "Including Work Session." Can they comment then, or...
Where are you?
At number eight on our agenda. It now says, "Three minutes each speaker, limited to items on agenda, including Work Session."
Yeah.
So the Work Session is item 20 as well? So they can make comments on that as well?
Yes.
Yes.
That's why we have it open.
Right, okay.
Are we doing on time?
We can do another.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Herb Gross. I live at Adelaide Gardens. This evening, I would like to thank all the ladies and gentlemen for the past couple of months that you've come up here and voiced your opinion and your criticism. I respect all of you. And please, please give me that courtesy tonight. Tonight, I am calling on all the council members and the mayor to consider what I have to say. For the past three months now, at these regular meetings, we've been listening to all these ladies and gentlemen talking about anti-Semitism, prejudice, bigotry. And I respect all your comments. And I despise all these bigots. And I despise anyone that speaks prejudice. But tonight, I am calling on the council members, again, and the mayor, to table all, all comments at these regular meetings and to set aside a special day that if anybody wants to talk about anti-Semitism, that they be able to come to these meetings. But these meetings, these regular meetings, there are very important issues in Highland Park that have to be addressed. And for the past couple of months now, this has been ignored. Mayor, if you want to bring guards to the temples and synagogues, I agree with you. But by the same token, you have to put guards at St. Paul's Church to protect all of the men, the women, the children, and the veterans and their families. And you have to put guards at all the African-Americans at their churches and to protect them.
So, Mr. Gross, I will address that. But this is, this portion is for agenda items. And you're very welcome to come and talk about things that are not on the agenda at the other portion. But, so, so please feel free to come up. As I said to the other woman who was talking, please feel free to come up if you have something you want to talk about that's off the agenda in the later portion. I do want to let you know that the synagogues... I am not sending guards there. The synagogues are paying for their own security, because that's what they have to do. Okay? Thank you.
I just want to bring out something, if I may. I was on the battlefield with many African-Americans. And they stood by me side by side. And I don't want to ever hear from anyone any derogatory remarks, which I've heard. The African-Americans are real fighters. And every veteran listening to me knows exactly what I'm talking about. And to the veterans at St. Paul's Church, I stand with you. And everything that we talked about will come to pass. But I want these meetings to be tabled. And one special meeting to be held at your convenience, Mayor, and members of the council. Let the majority of residents, if they have any remarks concerning anti-Semitism and prejudice, let them come to these meetings. But these meetings here are regular meetings.
Right.
And we have many issues that have to be addressed here.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Yeah, but I don't think it's fair, because...
I can wait.
Is it on the, is it on the agenda?
If the energy aggregation, the government energy aggregation ordinance, because I was curious about hearing more about. But I can wait until they're done.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda. Terry, you won't take... You can talk to... Yeah, just do my... Are you familiar at all with the concept?
Well, sorry, I'm curious.
State his name and address.
Oh, yes.
I know you know how to do the thing.
Is it the same one that Piscataway just passed?
So, yes and no. I mean, we'd be appro... It is using the same legislation that allows us to do it. They had a whole political process there that we're not looking to reproduce. I'll leave it at that. But what we've been talking about is basically a renewable local energy aggregation program, where essentially, we can go out to the market and solicit bids on behalf of the residents of the borough with the idea of doing better than what P S E and G would be by default, but also increasing the renewable portfolio by some not-yet-established amount. And so we're trying to figure out... We don't have to figure all that out to do the ordinance. But you have to do an ordinance to authorize, so the municipality has the authority to go out to the market and see if it can do just that. And that's what a lot of communities around us, New Brunswick being probably the most recent that I'm aware of, they just got up and running over the summer, have done very successfully.
I think, and I'll just, you're going to talk about this in a little bit. But one thing, I just pack up, Abby, and say that I am very interested in this. And so, in terms of how meetings might be structured, it would... When there's a long list of items on the work agenda, it'd be nice to have a public comment period after that, just to sort of, you know, comment on things you guys talk about. Like this, for instance. So one of the things that's unique about Piscataway's ordinance, which was different from New Brunswick, and also, I think there are some towns, Maplewood, some of the oranges have similar ordinances, now is that Piscataway set concrete targets.
That's through the referendum, that part.
Through the referendum, right. So the ordinance being talked about here is just sort of giving the borough the authority to try and get more renewable energy into the mix without saying the borough has to do, meet this percentage.
I mean, I've read the one, it's Food and Water Watch has a template. That's what went forward. So I'm familiar with it. That's pretty much what I was going to talk about with council. We haven't had that conversation.
Right.
So hang around a little bit later, and you'll hear more.
Great. I wanted to say, my kids were at the Veterans Day march, by the way. I have two five-year-olds at Irving, and they came home talking all about it. So that was really good.
That's great.
And they had their little signs that they made. It was really cool.
Okay, we're going to move on.
I wanted to talk about the pet store ordinance, but if you want me to read on that or the public...
Well, there's a public portion of the discussion specifically for that. Thank you. And it's coming up very soon. Clerk, can you please report on advertising the ordinance to prohibit the sale of dogs or cats from puppy mills for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 114 of the Code of the Borough of Highland Park, 2010, to enact a new Article 4 to prohibit the sale of dogs or cats from puppy mills, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavit of publication heretofore on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Thank you. May have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title. So moved.
Second.
Okay. And now is the public hearing. So would you like to speak to the ordinance?
Hi, my name is Jean Clayton. I live in Marlton, New Jersey. And I represent New Jersey residents against puppy mills. I sent you all a letter with attachments concerning pet stores and the laws federally and state. I don't know if you had a chance to read it all, but hopefully you did. I'm sure you got a lot of other letters saying the true facts from what pet stores do and what the law is. So I just wanted to say that these pet stores and puppy mills have been let down by every level of government. The federal government is not interested in doing it. They have an Animal Welfare Act, which is totally... It's so outdated, it doesn't make any sense. It allows for a breeding dog to be in a cage where they can just turn around and have a few inches above their head. And that's how they spend their lives breeding. Regulators, the USDA inspectors, they go out. They don't want to have to come back if there's a problem. So they just pass everything. The state level is pretty much the same. We do have a law in effect, Pet Purchase Protection Act. But again, it's not enforced. It's the Consumer Affairs that are supposed to support that. And I've been after them for three years with 120 complaints on what stores are doing that is against the law. And they still, to this day, haven't done anything. So the enforcement, I mean, it's like a paper target. You can pass anything you want, and if it's not enforced, it's nothing. So I'm very glad you took this up. I, you know, I hope for a hopeful outcome. Some people say towns shouldn't be involved, because it's not a town issue. But it is a moral issue. And I think we all have to look at that before we consider a business. And the pet stores, none of them are in compliance. I sent you some things, but I have a lot more. But not one of them is in compliance right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, before we vote, thank you. I'd like to thank Larry Cohen from the Humane Society and our guests tonight, Leslie Moran and Jean Clayton, for your statements and for your support. We are kind of making this a town issue, actually. We're in a unique position right now to ban the sales of dogs and cats that could make it through this puppy mill cycle. And we don't have any pet stores in town right now that sell pets. We don't want to have that here. As Leslie mentioned before, there were some pet stores that thought they were selling rescues. They were being sold rescues. And to sell them that way to people to adopt, and they were not. They were bred in these puppy mills that come from the Midwest. And it's a real horrible practice. As the ladies mentioned, the USDA is in charge of monitoring these puppy mills. However, they're the, it's the same, it's the same regulations governed for breeding cattle and other large animals that are, you know, the farmers, that farmers care for. And so, those are not necessarily pets. If you or I treated our pets in the way that the USDA allows breeders to treat their, the dogs and cats, we would be put in jail. So we're in a unique opportunity here to ban this within our community and to help stop this cycle. And I really hope that our, that our council votes yes on this. Thank you.
You reminded me that about Larry Cohen. I meant to say that he has spearheaded this town. We all kind of take a lead on a certain town. We've passed 130 ordinances. But he did the work in this town. So, thank you, Larry.
Any other public comment on this ordinance? All right. May have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
I was trying to say I have a question on this.
Oh, couldn't see you. Hold on, am I allowed to stop the vote?
She has a question.
We'll have to probably redo the motion and then go back again.
Okay. Next time, just speak out, because if I can't see you, I won't know.
We had gotten a bunch of emails from other folks saying that if we pass this resolution to, that we, we pass this resolution to not have the sale or the resale of animals, pets, coming in, that it would hurt potential persons who are trying to do, if they have their pets at home, to do, to do transaction, to resale their pets. If someone had a pet at home and they're getting rid of their pet, then this would not allow them to do so. So how does this address that issue from the emails we received?
Part of, we did discuss that in the agenda portion of the meeting.
It's okay.
But if Susan was the borough attorney, would you like to...
Sure, yeah, thank you. Great question, thank you. I didn't hit on that before. So we have some nonprofit organizations already that exist in town, very successful cat rescues. And, and those cats get adopted. There's no monetary exchange for that. and those cats get adopted, there's no monetary exchange for that. If, you know, if you have a pet that has puppies and you give the puppies away to your friends, it's fine. If your pet breeds on a regular basis and you have more pets than what are allowed in our regular cat and dog ordinance, then that's an issue right there, so we have that built into our existing code. We are not prohibiting consumers or residents to purchase their pets, they could purchase their pets anywhere they'd like. I'm used to breeders that have an online presence, or even an organization like Dogfinders, and breeders have a facility, you know, usually more of a rural setting, where if they're breeding their dogs, they're purebreds, the dogs can run around freely. People that are adopt, people that breed pets for this purpose wanna know that they're selling, even though they're selling the pets, they wanna make sure they're selling the pets to the right party that's going to take care of them and not neglect or abuse them. And people are encouraged to go to these breeding sites and see what the facilities look like, to ensure that what they're getting is the product that they want. They're paying thousands of dollars for a purebred dog, they're going to wanna see the facility where the dog was bred and where it's been being raised. So we have no problem if our residents wanna do that, we just don't wanna have a storefront here in town that's actually selling pets. We don't want pets in cages in a store all day long, and we don't want our health department to have to monitor these facilities that are not really monitored well by the state or the USDA at all.
Borough attorney, did you wanna add?
Yes, and specifically, Madam Councilwoman, to your question, a person, a private person who happens to have a dog that has puppies, they would not fall underneath the definitions of a pet shop in a retail setting, so that's, they would not be barred from doing that. However, if they started doing a pattern and practice of that, I think that's a separate issue than just a one-off.
Okay, so you're not saying that a person, a private person who happened to have, you know, they have, their animal had three other ones, that you're not saying that they are prohibited, we're not saying that they can't do something, as you say, a one-off?
Right.
That they could not go out and do this?
Correct, they would not fall.
This is just would be a breeder that's just breeding pets?
Right, and I believe there are no breeders in this town that would, so when you look at, when you look at the definition under pet shop, it's a retail establishment, so that has all sorts of legal definitions that are required for.
Somebody hang a shingle up and saying we're selling pets, this is not allowed?
Yes, correct.
All right. Okay, with that clarification, I vote yes.
Okay, so now, do I need a motion?
A new motion.
Okay, may I have a motion once again to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Just a brief comment, many of you know that I'm a prosecutor in some of the rural towns in western Jersey, and I frequently get some breeder cases where they found 300 rabbits, 100 mice, a pony, and about 300, I think it was either gerbils or something like that, in a ranch helm basement. And I've dealt for years and years, I think we were actually, a long time ago, here in Highland Park, we got a transfer to prosecute the horse breeding farm that was warehousing horses without any care, but, so I have a special care for that, and I also have received the emails from companies, from the pet store owners, associations, and so on. And I note for, in the warehouse clause, it also says, "The ordinance does not affect a consumer's ability to obtain a dog or cat," and I'm paraphrasing, "from a hobby breeder where the consumer can directly see the conditions in which the dogs and cats are bred, or can confer directly with the hobby breeder concerning those conditions." So as Councilwoman Wolkowitz has also spearheaded this, says, "This appears to be appropriate." I have the buy-in of my two rescue cats as well, and I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
This is my dog Lucy, she's a rescue, so I vote yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, and thank you, Councilwoman Wolkowitz, for leading this and taking this on. I think the gold is here, that we don't wanna be in a situation that Woodbridge was in a few years ago, where they had the puppy store in town and their residents were buying puppies from the store that were from puppy mills. And some of the residents, it cost them thousands of dollars, and I'm glad we're ahead of the curve, and I vote yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
And I vote yes, too, thank you.
Okay, clerk, can you please report on advertising the ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 16 of the revised general ordinances to increase the quotation threshold for claims approval for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 16, claims approval, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved. Second.
Public hearing. Okay, may I have a resolution, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I was, I shouldn't have said it, I said it was an exciting one.
May I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yeah.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, could you please report on introduction of salary ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
First reading.
First reading by title, thank you.
An ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to vie for and determine the rate of compensation of each officer and employee of the Borough of Highland Park and the method of payment of such compensation," has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt items numbered 12 through 24?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, I am appointing Scott Brescher to the, as the ADA coordinator for the borough. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
I'm delighted that our co-director, Scott Brescher, will be filling this role that our previous Lieutenant Gary Pannacella held for many years. Yes.
Okay. We're about to go into the second public participation session, this could be on any topic that you want to bring up. I'm just going to remind you that you'll be limited to three minutes per person, per speaker, and we have to conclude this portion by 9:00 PM. Please state your name and address, you can move the mic.
This is perfect for me, almost, there we go. Josh Przansky, North Tenth Avenue, here in Highland Park, and I'm standing here today as a member of the New Jersey Israel Commission, along with fellow Commissioner Andrew Betrayer. I just wanna read a statement from the governor that he issued today regarding the rocket attacks against Israel. The governor states that "Continued random targeting of innocent Israeli civilians by terrorist groups is not only cowardly but must be condemned in the strongest terms. New Jersey stands with all Israelis who wish to live free of the fear of unmitigated terrorism." Thank you.
Thank you.
I, Abby Stern Cardnell, Harper Street, again. So, question about the demographic survey for the committees and commissions. I got this survey, 'cause I'm on one of them, and I thought this is great. It said that it was being done for a grant, or, it was a Silver Ledivel status for maybe sustainable, I don't remember, but my question is, what is gonna be done with these results in terms of trying to encourage more diversity on our committees and commissions? How will we, as a town, take this information, not just for that Silver Status, but also to, you know, better our town participation?
So the Silver Status was the impetus for this, but it is in line with some of the things we've been discussing as a council since, you know, the spring, and I am hoping that we'll be able to address these issues by opening up slots on boards or commissions that might not have as great a diversity as they should.
Okay, great.
And I'm hoping the Communications Committee, which I know you're a part of, will help us communicate how many openings there might be. Yes.
Just to add, just 'cause I'm unfortunately very intimately familiar with the sustainable Jersey, one of the components in order to get points, it's not just doing the survey, it must, the results must be presented as compared to our demographic data to the council, so I would assume that report would be made available, and we would be presenting it here as well. So there is some, I mean, that's, I know you were talking about bigger next steps than that.
No, that's a good first step.
But you will hear, you will hear the results of the survey in a public way, and then, obviously, as we discussed, moving forward. So the action's really nice, in that it does give some good guidance on how to take this action forward.
Great. Another comment I had is about the award that the town received about affordable housing. I know another person said that that was a good thing, I think that that's great. I'm a little concerned about some comments that have been made in the past about how we have to do this due to litigation, and I would encourage you, you know, you got this award, I would encourage you to embrace that, be proud of that, and not just, you know, encourage affordable housing when it's convenient, and, you know, make it a priority. You know, this is just a general statement, not directed at, you know, any specific.
Yeah, 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 so I'm glad you said that, because yes, we do often think about litigations and how to change our ways in order to stop them, but I was delighted to share in the award, and a lot, I have a lot to thank Councilman Hirsch, former Councilman Hirsch, for introducing me to some of the folks at the Affordable Housing Institute, and I was delighted to participate in a panel where I was encouraging other elected officials from other municipalities to participate in these kinds of programs, not only because of the COA situation we're all involved in, but because it brings people to the community and involves them in the day-to-day life of everything going on here that might not otherwise have been able to afford to live in your community. And there seemed to be a great deal of enthusiasm for doing that from some of the people who were in the panel room that I was discussing this in.
I think she's late.
There you go.
I just wanna add that, yes, we look at, one of the things, when I first came onto this council, there was a time in Highland Park where you kicked the can down the road, or kicked it to another town.
Yeah.
And it was easy to just move it off to say, lack of a better term, New Brunswick, to certain areas of New Brunswick. New Brunswick, you can't do that anywhere, 'cause New Brunswick is just as expensive as anywhere else. However, one of the things that we took on when I came onto this council was to make sure that there was affordable housing. The council at the time wanted to make sure that we prepared affordable housing here in Highland Park, and just don't push it off our responsibility to another town and have somebody else do it, and those people can stay over there because they don't have all the resources. So one of the, one of the things that I'm very proud of, that the council that's here and the council before, was always making sure that affordable housing was a part of the conversation, not only the conversation that we were in the action of making homes affordable here in Highland Park. So that has, it's just not now, it's been that way for the past 20 years.
Yeah. And I just, that reminds me, I just, I don't think Ms. Rosner is here anymore, but she did bring up the Cronin situation. The Housing Authority was, I did call them and put them on alert about the situations that she and two of her other, two of the other residents in the building came to talk with us about. The meeting was actually with them a week and a half ago, but the folks over at the Housing Authority are going to be addressing many of the issues. The biggest problem that they expressed to me when they came to talk to me, and this goes back to the whole affordable housing issue, that those are the buildings that the borough has a relationship with. They are now upgrading a lot of the bathrooms and showers, and Matt, I don't know if you can talk to some more of the upgrades. The upgrades themselves, I'm being told by the Housing Authority, are what is interfering with their Wi-Fi service there, she may have mentioned that before. But, you know, Matt, do you wanna talk to the Cronin?
Just briefly, that there is a pretty extensive upgrade of many of the bathrooms in all of the facilities, and that process is, it's a construction process, and in the construction process, things break and things need to get fixed. And so I know that some of the residents are without Wi-Fi as they're putting in new layers of bathrooms, other residents are questioning the height of the showers and things like that, but the Housing Authority assures me that they're working on solutions for all of those.
Yeah. So that's a long way of getting back to way back when the borough was committed to affordable housing, even before any of us were on the council.
So I absolutely hear what you're saying, I'm just encouraging you to stand by that and not, you know, not say it's due to litigation only, which I have seen be said many times as kind of a way, if it's not our fault that we have to do this, but I think that you should be proud to do what you are doing.
Okay, thank you.
I have one last thing, which I just wanted to say, I saw on the later agenda that you are gonna discuss Highland Park Family Network that I'm part of proposing, and I wanted to say I appreciate those of you that I've talked to about it, and, you know, I hope that you can all support it, I don't think it's a very controversial item, and I'm excited to see where it goes.
Thank you.
You'll speak about it later.
Please state your name and address.
Does anybody not know my name? Bruce Picard, 307 Magnolia Street. The housing, you kind of, I got distracted with what I was going to talk about, but years ago, I mean, I've owned this house 40 years, almost 50, and I think we bought it in 75 when my daughter got married, and she lived in, one half of it was a two-family house, but the original family and their married children had the other half of the house. Anyway, I get phone calls almost daily, something related to housing, I just wonder whether other people get this, too. Bathrooms is one thing, and insulation and heating.
Okay.
And I just wonder.
I think Councilwoman Foster Dublin has an answer for you.
I'm sorry?
I think Councilwoman Foster Dublin has an answer for you.
Unfortunately, there is a lot of scammers out there, and they're targeting certain demographics, and seniors are high on their targeted market, and so they're targeting senior homes to say, "You need repairs, you need to do this, you need to do that." And I would strongly suggest, when you get these calls and they come out very aggressive, that you call the police department, let them know, because every day, there's a new, there's a new scam going on with either housing. The post office have a whole list of all the problems that they're having with people calling and trying to do scam, the Better Business Bureau also have one, the DCA also has a list, and just to let people know that, now they're having people that look like they're service workers, maybe a PSENG worker, but they're really not, they're just scammers trying to get into your home. So there's a whole scam, every day you watch the list, and the list just grows with different things that people are trying to do to rip people off.
How do I get to find out who they are? I usually hang up as soon as.
You're doing the right thing, hang up. You get those calls, I get them on my cellphone, I get them on my house phone, I get them on my business phone, just hang up. phone, just hang up.
This is on my home phone, it's, it's gaining momentum.
It's a commonplace, now, now we're getting, before, it never used to be text messages, but they're warning you now not even to answer, not even to answer these text messages. If you don't know the person who's texting you, do not respond.
Well, I listen and I don't respond, I just hang up.
You're doing the right thing. Unfortunately, you're doing the right thing. I just recently called social security and when I called social security, I got a voicemail and it says, you have reached a social security administration. And they said, you can hold on or you can leave a message. And what they're encouraging you to do is to leave a voice, your own voice recorded message, leave that on the phone and then they'll call you back with your own voice to avoid all the scams.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, even the government is being, higher government is being plagued by this, so we just have to be very cautious in everything we do.
Yeah, and I, and just in reference to the dog conversation before the lady has left, I've had probably a dozen dogs since the age of 12, when the first one followed my brother home from school. And my father said, this dog has a home, no water, no food, no nothing. The next morning, when he came out to go to school again, the dog was sitting by the door waiting for him. This was in South Jersey where we were living. Followed my brother to school, waited for my brother to come out, he had a bicycle and rode home and walked home, the dog. My father said, you know, maybe this dog is homeless, put a bowl of water out. The next morning, we made him a cream cheese sandwich and the dog became ours and we named it Bobby. About three months later, Bobby disappeared and my father, ah, see, I told you. And all of a sudden, a few years later, we hadn't noticed that Bobby had gotten a little fuller, we just saw it while we were feeding it well. But Bobby had a litter under a chicken coop, five little puppies. We raised one of them, brown, full, hairy thing named Wolf, and the others my father disposed of. And I've had dogs in my life, except for the four years that I was in Israel, have had at least one dog, sometimes two. And the oldest one is 13, that's Ladybug, and she's with me and we're looking at each other, who is going to outlast whom.
Thank you, Mrs. Picard, that's, that's.
But what I really wanted to talk to you about was the maintenance of the streets and the sidewalks. It's getting to winter time, it's raining, it's freezing. On my block, on, on Magnolia, the sidewalk is in terrible maintenance. Who is responsible for repairing it before somebody else gets it? I haven't gotten anything for my damage and my arm is permanently damaged.
So do you want to talk to that?
The, the sidewalks fronting the houses or any commercial business are the responsibility of the landowner.
Well, I think you really need to broadcast that, that people understand this.
Ms. Picard, as, as the mayor and the administrator know, 2020, the sidewalks are on my agenda as Public Works, uh, one of the top two projects.
Okay, because on my block, the sidewalks are in terrible condition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we remind everybody about the funds that we've been awarded by, by the DOT to repair sidewalks and curb cuts and such as well on borough properties?
That's the, the intersections and slight, uh, we can.
Yeah, but that's just, that's not what she's talking about.
Exactly. She's talking about homeowner. But just want to remind everybody, we got another $220,000 two weeks ago to help us implement the grant that we were awarded in 2016. Thank you.
Okay.
I have to have my kaching moments, you know?
Okay. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Matthew Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue. Um, just, just because I'm wearing my pin, um, I did feel compelled to come up here and, uh, congratulate the borough for, uh, winning, um, uh, the community award from the Housing Community Development Network of New Jersey. We did not, you, you mentioned ex-councilman Hirsch, he had nothing to do with that, with, with those honors, I wanted to make that very clear. Uh, the borough was nominated by coming home of, of Middlesex County for its work with the, um, Reformed Church of Highland Park's Affordable Housing Corp. And it's, uh, you know, it's ongoing effort to, to, to house residents in need, uh, you know, and to provide affordable housing for, for residents in need. It's illustrative of, of an environment that allows that type of operation to exist, uh, all the way down to code, you know, from, from, from policymakers, but all the way down to, to code enforcement, um, that provide a favorable environment. Because you can have a million affordable housing corps, but if they're in a town, it doesn't favor, um, either the, either the residents that live in that type of housing or just does not, or requires, or, or involves, you know, a more hostile environment, um, you, you, you would be surprised how many obstacles, or maybe not, how many obstacles there are to actually building affordable housing. Um, I did want to just point out to, I, I do know that the borough, um, uh, is making a concerted effort on building affordable housing and, um, I don't think it's ever tried to shy away from, from, at least not in my time, from, uh, that obligation, um, putting it on the developers as, 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 as compulsory. I know the borough, uh, as a matter of policy, bends over backwards, um, to, to, to find ways to provide more affordable housing in town. There are times though, when, when certain levels of density are, are, are necessitated from litigation. I think that's, that's probably what, what, what you might have been hearing, but it's, um, uh, I would love to see more affordable homes, uh, in Highland Park and in Middlesex County, and there are ways to do that. Uh, and we'd love to, you know, have, continue having conversations with you about that. I, uh, also just wanted to, I was happy to hear that, Mike W., um, his name is not hard to pronounce, I just haven't learned how to say it.
Roszkiewicz.
Roszkiewicz. Um, nobody's name is, is, nobody's name is difficult to pronounce, it's just a matter of whether we've taken the time to actually learn it.
So pronounce it.
Mikey Alphabet says, uh, as, as, as Joan, as Joan Hollings says. Um, I, uh, I think he's an amazing, amazing person. Uh, I, I've, I've known him for a lot of years. He, um, uh, I actually happened to spend some time with him and the two other guys from, from DPW, uh, when they were fixing the water main break on, uh, on, 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 uh, North Fourth, uh, right in front of Morty's there. And, uh, they were out there, they had, they had the contractor come in with the ice cutter to, to, and it was, you know, they were out there all hours of the night. Um, he has the right, I think he has the right temperament. Um, he also helped, uh, you know, he, he even, you know, he, he participated in the, in.
Matt, you wrap it up because it's three minutes?
Sure, sure.
Sorry.
I'm, I'm, I'm complimenting a borough employee, how often does that happen, Mayor? Um, he participated in, uh, in, in raising the pride flag, uh, at, at the LGBTQ pride event, uh, you know, every, every June. And he, you know, whether, whether, whether he realized it or not, or whether anybody else realized it or not, that's a huge, huge deal for, 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 for employee to, to, to really get behind the policy and understand the importance of, 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 of the symbolism of, of, of that, of that gesture. And he was really happy to do it. Um, and, um, you know, uh, good choice. Thanks.
Thanks, Matt.
Hi, I'm Pam Dorman, 423 South Fifth Avenue. First apologies. Oh, all right. Pam Dorman. So, um, I, I basically got in from work not too long ago and I'm also not totally, totally prepared, but I had written some questions regarding, um, there's continuing developments regarding, um, developing Buckwoods. And so there are two things that I understand. One is that there are going to, there's going to be another tree removal.
Mm-hmm.
And that had to be allowed because of the previous court case, is that the way you put it?
Yes.
Okay. And the other is that there, we've, we've gotten something from the developer in terms of, uh, the environmental, uh, fix-up that has to be done before any building can take place. Is that correct also?
So, do you want to talk to?
And, and first I'd like to apologize, Pam, you called me on Friday and then I was off yesterday, so I haven't had a chance to catch up to you.
Yeah, no, I knew you weren't, yeah, yeah, yesterday, that's why I put in that email, yeah.
But, um, the way I, what I think you're referring to is there's the LSRP Licensed Site Remediation Professionals Report that was submitted, um, at our request following their removal request. Is that what you're, where he?
I think so.
They have identified these additional areas for testing, um, which was their rationale for the tree removals. Is that what you're referring to?
The tree removal, that's one piece, but the other piece was that, um, whatever remediation needs to be done on that property, that we were, the borough was approached by the developer regarding that issue.
So it's, it, so, so that's a whole, the last piece of the litigation regarding Buckwoods? Um, and I believe, um, that, um, we, we, it went to, um, one of the judges and then he, um, was not happy with the results, so.
Results of the environmental testing?
No, the judge's decision and then so he, I don't know if, uh, you want to talk to it, Alyssa, but, um, so, so, um, he took it to, um, the word is escaping me, what you call it, when, when you go to a court to oppose a, a decision by one judge.
Appellate court?
He appealed it. Thank you.
Wait, I'm sorry now, who appealed it?
Um, uh, Buck, you know, Jack Morris.
Jack Morris appealed the judge's decision.
Appealed, and, and so it went to the appellate court and at the appellate court, um, we, the judge there disagreed.
Well, as much as I know, I, I.
Yeah, the judge there disagreed with what the decision was of the regular judge and so now we're sort of in limbo waiting.
Ultimately, your question is, yes, it's litigation related and the litigation is not entirely done yet. But generally speaking, if we just step back just to your real question, which is whether or not there has to be remediation done before building starts, yes.
Yes, we all know that.
Yes.
So it was my understanding, the question was, who's responsible for that?
That is still being.
And that's still in the courts.
That's still, that's still being, yes.
Okay. So there's sort of a nothing to do about that, except the borough should pray really hard.
Well, the borough should fight really hard, is, is what I would say.
Right, I like that one too. I like that one too. So anyway, but then with this tree removal, one of the things I pointed out was there, there are many, I don't know, the number of trees is, was maybe a 30 or something like that, but there were five or six of them, like most of them are behind one property at the end of the, that whole land. And I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about erosion for all of us, but it seemed very odd that a place that's already had a lot of trees removed is the site of where most of the trees in this next removal are proposed to be removed. So is there anything to, to be done?
Well, I would turn to the borough attorney on that and.
That, without having read, read that report specifically, that, generally speaking, because it's LSRP, a licensed scientist, there, I, I, without reading it, I don't know what the reason was why those, what you say, those five trees in that specific place, but his license is on the line. So when he writes that report, there has to be a reason for it. Um, whether, so I don't know, I don't know what the report said, I haven't read the report.
That's fine.
So I don't know whether I agree with it or not agree with it and I'm not a scientist.
That's fine.
Can we question that report?
I just want to, because you have to, uh, borough attorney here tonight is in our day-to-day, our day-to-day.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that.
So I, um, we referred the report to our engineer who has an LSRP on staff who reviewed it. Um, we, and he, he said it's a justifiable, he, there, there are always, the, the trick is, different LSRP's may take a different approach to testing, but he couldn't say this is factually wrong and I, you should, you should fight it. And, but, so the, the permit, as I understand it, was issued.
Yes, I understand that, too.
So I just wanted to make that clear.
So we've had two LSRP's look at it.
Our, their LSRP and theirs. And then we, we just referred it to ours.
So did we, right. Did ours recognize that there were a large chunk behind an area where trees have already been removed?
I, he, he looked at the maps, he looked at the report, he read it and probably understood it better than I can and he could not.
Is there a way I can communicate with him or just forward the information I've sent to you, to him?
It's three months. What I'm trying to say is they've reviewed it and determined that it was not, it was, you know, justifiable in some way. So I don't, I'm not quite clear on what you're, you're asking.
I think that, um.
Because I know one of your questions was, there was some outside of the proposed footprint of the new building.
That's right.
Right. But the, my understanding is the DEP looks at it as a whole site.
That's fine.
And so if he's going to develop it and he has questions, I say he, the company has questions about the whole site, uh, they have to show that the whole site is suitable and whatever needs to be done to, to get it up to snuff for residential would happen. And so I don't, my understanding is there was, um, adequate justification in the LSRP report that our LSRP concurred, may, may not agree on ways of testing, but there's different ways to do things. And that, between that and the court decision that had already been passed on the tree removal permits, our borough attorney advised us, we must issue the permit. So that's where we are. So I'm not sure that he could tell you more, that, I'm not trying to evade your question.
No, no. But what I'm thinking is, you know, in my field, if there are two professionals who look at something, similar information, um, but if you're missing some background information, like the fact that stuff was already taken down from that area?
He was familiar, this, this person was familiar with that.
All right. So, um, I guess I'll just sort of.
And I, and I think the thing we have to concentrate on now is this last piece of litigation for the cleanup.
Concentrate on that and concentrate on the possibility of erosion, a lot of which is already taking place.
We've talked, we, we have a geological, uh, uh, engineer who's put some stakes in to monitor erosion for, on our behalf, they are, they are on the Goldberg property because they gave us permission to do that. And we have been calling and calling Freehold Soil Service, who's responsible for requiring and monitoring soil erosion and sediment control on the site. I, as of the last check-in, the, they have not responded to our professionals as to the status of that plan.
And who do you go to when they don't respond?
Uh-huh.
Who does one go to when they don't respond?
I don't know, it's a good question, but we.
I have to tell you what my bias is.
Yeah.
A lot of these companies work with a lot of different people and, um, and I think they're influenced.
So who you go to in those situations is the DEP?
Right.
And so, you know, if, if we don't get a response from them in the next, you know, we need to give them a little time?
Yeah.
If we don't get a response from them, we will go to the DEP.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thanks.
That was way more than three minutes. No, I got cut off.
It's okay.
People could come back.
Matt, you can come back if you want to finish.
I don't need to come back, any, anything for this.
Okay. State your name and address, please.
Andrew Getreer, South Second Avenue. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I want to address the failure of the borough council to pass or a resolution condemning anti-Semitism. It is something that, um, I, I think you, I know you have been thinking about a lot, but I don't know that you really understand the ramifications of, of the failure of the council to this date. Three years ago, a lot of this country woke up after election day wondering if this was the same country that they thought it was. The results of, of their, of politics and government being such a surprise to them that they wondered, really, do I live in the same country that I believed that I was in? And that is exactly how I felt the day after the last council meeting, when I sat here until I could not take it anymore for about two and a half hours. And I heard my fellow borough residents expressing some of the most hateful rhetoric that I have ever heard in a public forum, things that I generally only see when I am, uh, unfortunately, patrolling some of the darker parts of the internet and hate sites. And I sat here for two and a half hours and I listened to that and I, and I saw the failure of the borough, of, of, of the borough to respond to that. And I just wonder what, what will it take to move you? My, my family actually wonders if I. My, my family actually wonders if I, if it is safe for me to get up and speak at these meetings, because they're on tape and people watch them. And I know they do because I've gotten a lot of comments in the last two weeks about them from people who weren't even at the meeting. And I know that not all of those comments are friendly and not all the people who are watching this are friendly. And it makes me wonder, it makes me feel that this town has failed the Jewish community in two different ways. One, there's been a failure because hate has been released. It's not that hate has no home here, let's stop pretending. Hate has a home here and we have allowed it to fester and voice itself because you have failed to say stop. It's a failure that, that, that people in the Jewish community have been talking about every day since that last resolution. A lot of people who didn't come, who just figured, it's an antisemitism resolution, of course it'll pass, because dozens of municipalities in New Jersey and around the country have passed similar things. States have passed similar things. Governments in, in Europe have passed similar things. If the Germans get past an antisemitism resolution, that includes condemning the antisemitism of BDS, why can't our own town of Highland Park? And the, 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 the pain of this is, is real. Other groups have come to you, or we have recognized them without even having to come to us, needing support. When immigrants are, are under fire in this country, this borough steps up and provides a resolution of welcome and a statement that it cares. And you have failed so completely to do that, that I don't think you care. Because how many months does it take to write a resolution saying, we condemn hatred of Jews? If you actually, every one of you, had put in the, an effort that it takes, you could have done this, like every, like twenty-something other towns in this state. And I know some of you have put in the effort, but I also know some of you don't even read your email, because you've stated it right here at this forum. And I know that I sent a, prior to the last meeting, I sent a, a, a very, what was to me, a, a well-thought-out impassioned email to you. And I can count on no hands how many responses I got from you. Not an acknowledgement, not an acknowledgement, thank you for your, for your concern about this issue, we will discuss it. That's all a person needs to think, that maybe somebody on the other end cares. And I got zero. Nothing sadly to say from any of you. And I know that there are probably a hundred other people in this town who sent their concerns in and they got nothing either. So my plea to you, show us that you care. Show us that you care what concerns citizens have to say. Show us that you care that the Jewish community is feeling unsafe in our own town, abandoned by you, and afraid of some of our own neighbors. Now I hope that you have kicked the can down the road never to return to it again. I hope that you will actually take the ideas behind this resolution, find people to educate yourselves with, and come up with something. I think it's too late to put the hate bag genie back in the bottle because it's been released, but it's not too late to show that you are against that hatred and that you do care. Thank you very much.
So, so Andrew, I just want to address a couple of things. The Borough Council does take this very seriously. I think part of the reason that we wound up in this situation is that there is clearly, as you mentioned, a need for not only the governing body, but the entire community to understand what we're talking about here. I will tell you that I do know the council, most of the council members did read every single email and I'm telling you, there were probably over three hundred of them on all sides. So please forgive them and me for not responding to every single one of them. The, the, I, what I did say in my posting recently, when we, when I decided to pull the resolution because it was ripping this town apart, was that what I did clearly learn from this is that there are people in our community and on our council, members who said prior to this, they had never even heard of what BDS was, for example, which is what stalled a lot of the discussion here on the council for the antisemitism resolution. We do have to put together a, a series of maybe panel discussions, education, and then come back to this as a community, feeling that that hate that you're feeling right now and that others have expressed to me, isn't hate, but was misunderstanding, lack of knowledge, whatever. I'm hoping that once we get through this period of however long it takes for us to come together as a community, we will be able to do that and all of our residents can feel safe here in Highland Park.
Can I respond? Because I, I thank you for saying that.
But try to, try to stick to three minutes though.
Oh, thank you. I thank you for saying that and I do hope that you are able to achieve that. But the longer it takes and the long, and the length of time that it has taken and the failure to get to that point, to, to this moment, the less impact you will have eventually, because that genie's out of the bottle. And if we wait until everyone in Highland Park is thoroughly educated about what antisemitism is and how it makes Jews feel and what are the different tropes, well, the Western civilization has been dealing with that issue for over two thousand years and I don't think we're going to solve and educate everyone about antisemitism. How about you listen to the rabbis of every single congregation in this town and the vast majority of Jews in this town and every poll that's done of Jews in America and you listen to what Jews have to say. Not two or three outliers who, to be, to be perfectly frank and honest, don't represent anybody else in the Jewish community. But listen to us. You know as well as anybody in this town, Mayor, and I, I hope that you, now that we've reached this nadir, can now become a bridge, because you represent the entire town and you are a part of the Jewish community and you're a part of the progressive community and you're, and you're, you're our leader here. You need to step up and be the bridge to educate everybody.
I think we all, yes, thank you. I hope, I hope, I hope we have peace here and we have come to understand one another.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You haven't said anything that I have not felt in the town of Highland Park or in this entire United States. So us not passing something is not taken lightly, especially by me. Everybody else in this room can get away, but I am the obvious one. When I walked on any street, anywhere, anybody that looks like me, I am open field day for anyone. So this is not taken lightly, especially by me. I received over five hundred emails and I read them all, because I wanted to educate myself. I've met with religious leaders, I've met with various community leaders or different people from different houses of worship, religious Jewish houses of worship, and I've met with them. I'm taking this seriously and I'm still continue to meet with folks. So this is not taken lightly by me by no long shot, because I feel that we're in the same boat. Unfortunately, we're, we're in the same boat and this cannot be taken lightly, especially, not by me. So trust and believe that this is taken very seriously. There was a point in this country where we worked together and I would like to see where it comes back, where blacks and Jews are united and we work together for the common enemy that we both have.
Amen. Thank you for saying that. It means a lot to hear it. We need to hear, we need to hear things like that from, from everyone in this town. Although I can take it off if I need to.
Can you take this off?
You can't take that off.
No.
And I do understand that and, and we do need to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Ethan Schoolman, Harrison Avenue. I wasn't going to speak to this particular issue, I was going to say first that I'm so sorry for what you're feeling and what you're going through and your family. I just feel terrible and I think I, you know, though I'm myself an, an opponent of BDS and, and Jewish, I felt so strongly that the council should not be taking a stance on BDS or Israel, that I neglected to say the most important things, is that I really care about how this debate is affecting you. I don't want you or anyone in your community to feel that, anyone in this town, certainly myself, isn't worried about hate or, or feels strongly, certainly opposed to antisemitism. I do think that the council made a very wise decision in stepping back and having a more methodical process for understanding what people in the, in the community think. There's a, it can feel risky, because once you open, you know, the genie bottle is open, but once you keep it open, people keep arguing and yelling and that can feel really uncomfortable. But it can be managed and I think the process of learning can be really important. And I, I just want to say also that I, I hope it, I mean, there is a sense in which, you know, many people didn't know what BDS was or have strong opinions about Israel, but some people who spoke a couple of weeks ago knew very well what BDS is and also have strong opinions about Israel that might not be the same as other people. So I think it shouldn't just be about education, except in the sense we should all be educating each other.
Right.
About the different thoughts and attitudes and opinions and feelings we have towards these subjects. And, you know, I think if we approach it with an open mind and respectfully, and I will try and have that attitude myself, I think whatever the resolution ends up being, you know, it'll be easier to accept. So I hope that the community meetings are widely advertised, I hope there are several of them, and certainly I think that turnout will be vigorous, but that's for the good.
Thank you.
Can I say something, a response here? Because what, I'm sorry, come up your name again?
But keep it to three minutes.
Two minutes. Ethan? So what, you said something really important, Ethan, that nobody said at the prior meetings. You said, even though, even though you and I disagree about the resolution, you are, you, you respect my feelings about it and you don't, and you're sad, you did not intend it to cause pain to the Jewish community, right? At our previous public forums, the people who spoke against the resolution, they shocked me, not just with some of the, the tone or the extremism of their rhetoric, but not a single one took a moment to say, I hear you, other people in the Jewish community, Jewish community, I hear that, that this causes you pain and you feel that this is antisemitic. I don't mean it that way. Here's what I mean. Not a single person said that, not a single person expressed that, to my knowledge, and I sat there for a long time. That means a lot. And I, and I think if we can get to a point where those types of things are expressed, then we're going to make some progress.
That's exactly what I hope we say.
I totally agree. It's like when somebody says, when we say black life matters and say blue life matters, that means, doesn't matter. So I, I get you, I hear you clearly. And just to add that, I've, I've taken this so seriously that some of the temple members, I was going to say, houses of worship members that I met with, Jewish leaders, they told me, I asked about going, not that I need to go to Israel to be educated, but I asked about when is the next trip, because I really want to go. I know what hate is, I don't have to go there to find that out, but I would really like to go to understand better. And that's one of the things that I want to do next year, is go on one of those trips.
Please state your name and address.
Jeff Bardaro, Ellevon Lane Street. I, I share Ethan's thoughts. I was another person who opposed and opposes the resolution in every version that I've seen and I, I do think it's important to say that people like me who oppose the resolution do care about what the Jewish community thinks and feels. But, and I shouldn't follow a statement like that with a but, but it, it is important to understand that, that the listening and the, and that has to go in all directions. And I think the reason that I just got up is, two things that you said really struck me in a negative way. One is that there were plenty of people who spoke at the last meeting and at previous meetings in opposition to the resolution. And I was one of the people who circulated a letter that a lot of people in the community signed opposing the resolution. And in a lot of those comments and in the letter that I signed, it was very clear that we do care about what the Jewish community thinks and feels and we understand that there's an atmosphere, especially since this presidential administration took over, of real antisemitic hatred out there that we oppose and that we actually support. The borough taking steps against antisemitism. And it, it does, it does feel like maybe that part of the message isn't, isn't actually being heard, because we don't agree about some of the, the full content of the resolution, including the BDS part. So I, I think a lot of us, and I, I speak only for myself, I can't tell you what other people are thinking, but when I say to somebody, I, I'm not a supporter of BDS, I have relatives in Israel, I, you know, I'm a supporter of Israel in general, I disagree with a lot of Israel's policies under the current administration, but I feel like a lot of that just goes sort of in one ear and out the other and then all, all you really hear is, I don't support a resolution condemning BDS, because I don't think it's automatically antisemitic. And so when I say that part of things, that part gets tuned out. And so I think it's unfair to say, not a single person said this or not a single person said that, because we.
I don't know if you read the letter you circulated, I didn't see that, I didn't see whatever the petition was, this wasn't sent to me. Emily, can you talk to what I heard in this room?
So, so I, you know, I appreciate this dialogue and this is exactly, you know, the kinds of things we need to get to, so we're hearing each other, to your point, both ways. But, you know, I, and I hate to say this, but I don't think the council meeting right now is the place for us to go back and forth on this issue. I am planning on having open discussions. I'm not going to wait until, you know, six months from now to start addressing these issues. So I, I think it would be great if the two of you could talk, perhaps, you know, after the meeting or during the meeting, but not from the microphone and back and forth in the audience. I think that would be a wonderful start to what I'm hoping to see happen throughout the town. And I will be looking for people to work with me on pulling this all together. So don't, don't think that now that the resolution is not on the table right now, you have to stop writing me. So please let me know if you're interested in being a part of making this happen.
Thank you. I do, I did want to say one other thing and I will, I'll stop talking directly to the other commenter, but, but I do want to, as I said, there were two things that you said that, that kind of struck me. And the, the other one is about this reading of the emails and it's something that I've also seen in the media and, and I think that it is a mischaracterization of what the council member said. And I, and I think that if you go back and watch the council meeting, nobody said they weren't reading people's emails. There was, there was emails that were going around the day of the meeting substituting a new resolution for the old one. And I think one of the council members objected to that and pointed out that there were emails that she didn't have an opportunity to read. And I think if you go back, you'll see that, that's really not a fair response to what the council did. And I don't think it's fair to say that the council members were not, didn't care about what was going on. If, if those of us who listened to everybody's explanations on both sides of how they voted, there was one thing that I think everybody could see, which is that everybody involved, everybody in the room cares deeply about the issue. And so I, I think saying, you don't care because you don't agree with me is, is not really fair. But I'm happy to talk to you after the meeting.
Thank you.
Hey, Matt Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue. I just wanted to, you know, again, to, to.
I just wanted to, you know, again, to echo what Ethan and Jeff said, is thanking the council for tailing the resolution and taking time in this important document. I know that I had, in both of my public comments at the meeting, I did mention that, you know, I did say that I know how deeply this affects the Jewish community. And that, you know, when you have a portion of your population in pain and in fear, that has to be addressed. It just has to be addressed. My belief is that it just needs to come from a different place. That's where I'm at. And, you know, a lot of people disagree with that. But I do think that in a town with diverse opinions and backgrounds that you have to, you know, and as you, as our elected leaders, you have to find a way to navigate that. It's not up to us. When it is up to us, then we just kind of fight in the pit, you know? That's not how it should be. When we did the, you know, and this is just, it's kind of because it's somewhat relevant, when the council passed, you know, considered the then Sanctuary City Resolution, there was a lot of give and take. There was compromise. We heard from people who disagreed with what we were doing. We heard from, we've heard, and a lot of people who agreed with what we were doing actually ended up disagreeing with what we were doing because we compromised. Some of the biggest opponents of, ended up being people who you would have thought would have actually agreed with this. And Mr. Gatreer, I think you said at the public forum that, you know, you wish that there had been a balanced discussion. I remember you said that, you know, where's the conservative viewpoint? Where's the progressive, you know, we had the progressive viewpoint, but is that the moral standpoint because only the progressive viewpoint was being portrayed? I disagree. But...
I think the essence of the resolution was strictly enforcement. It was just police enforcement. That's it. You know? Every other program, every other programmatic element, it didn't cost, A, first, it didn't cost a dime. We were going to lose money from it and it was going to be horrible for the Borough.
It didn't cost a dime. The municipal ID should be generating revenue, the municipal ID machine should be generating revenue. I heard that, I recently heard that that machine has been broken. I don't know if that's actually true or not.
No.
You're thinking, our Borough ID, meaning the employee ID, which has now been...
The Borough ID, okay, okay. Love to see the municipal...
But not the one that you're talking about.
Yeah, I would love to see the municipal ID machine program actually promoted more by the Borough. Because if we are serious about looking to protect our residents from a place of support and positivity and lifting people up instead of labeling people, there's nothing in that Inclusive Communities Resolution, formerly Sanctuary City Resolution, compromise. There was nothing in that resolution that names Trump, that names the right wing, that names white supremacy, that names anything that was attacking a certain portion of the community. It has to be from a place of hope and positivity. And that's where I come from, you know, and that's what I was trying to communicate. And, you know, I've been called horrible things because of it. But we look to you to lead us through that because we're not going to do it. We can't. Thank you.
Thank you. And...
Hi.
And you are going to be the last speaker, I think.
Yeah. So I'm setting my personal record of number of times at the mic tonight. So again, Abby, Stern Cardinal, Harper Street. So I haven't spoken at any of the meetings about the antisemitism resolution, and that is on purpose. I actually have mixed feelings about the content of the resolution and all the different, all the different versions that have been out there. But one thing that I wanted to address publicly is the fact that there is a broader Jewish community and that some of us, as part of that Jewish community, are being overlooked. I think that there is a very visible part of the Jewish community and that that part of the Jewish community is very important. It's important to hear them. But I'm also part of the Jewish community and I've also been called names. And I would like part of these discussions going forward, and I'm saying this to you and to everybody, to be about how, as Jews, we may have different ways of expressing our religion, but we are all Jews, we all should be united as Jews, whether we hold the same opinions as or not about international politics. And again, I still have not said what my opinion is, so just because I'm saying this doesn't mean I am for or against anything. But just because I, you know, I do not do certain things and I do not look a certain way does not make me any less Jewish. It does not make me a Jew in name only. It does not make me any less relevant and important as part of the Jewish community. And I'd like that to be part of the discussion as well, and I don't think that that's been said. And I think we are talking about the Jewish community and only talking about a portion of the Jewish community, a very important portion, not saying there should be any less focus, but there should be additional focus that the Jewish community, I've said that statement like 10 times now, is broader and should come together and not tear each other apart.
Thank you for that. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break and then we will resume with our work session. So please feel free to hang around. We'll be moving down there. Thank you.